Interested parties will be given an opportunity to be heard. Application number seven eighteen dash, oh, sorry, before I get to that, we have one adjournment. It's on page two and it's application number seven twenty-eight dash twenty-five, Sandra Roberts. Is there anybody to be heard on that application, Sandra Roberts?
Good evening, my name's Kelly Bennett, twelve fifty-seven Udall Road, Beishore, New York, one one seven zero six, here tonight on behalf of the homeowner and architect's office to respectfully request an adjournment for this evening's case. We had some discrepancies in our.
Does anyone else here like to be heard in this matter? All right, I'll take a motion for an adjournment, please.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Thank you so much.
Open the German.
Okay, back to the top. Application number seven eighteen dash twenty-five, Thomas and Janine Chabuski. Permission to leave above ground pool having side yard of thirteen point five feet instead of required fourteen feet and shed having side yard of zero point five feet instead of required two feet. Residence A District, north side of Lagoon Place, seventy feet west of Irish Lane, East Islip. Is anybody here in that application? Come on up.
If you could just give us your name and address, sir.
My first name is Thomas, T-H-O-M-A-S, last name is Chabuski, C as in Charlie, H-E, B as in boy, U-S-K-E, I live at sixty Lagoon Place, East Islip.
Mr. Chabuski, you need half a foot?
Excuse me?
You need half a foot?
Yes, please.
Okay, I think we got it.
Think we got it.
Planning any comments?
No comment.
Is anyone else that'd like to be heard in this matter? I'll take a motion, please.
Motion, grant the application.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Application's granted, thank you.
There was also the, there was a shed?
All granted.
Oh, thank, I'm good. Actually, thanks very much.
Run, quick. We may change our minds.
Application number seven nineteen dash twenty-five, Pastor Yana, permission to use dwelling for two family, family use only pursuant to Islip Town Code, section sixty-eight dash four one nine point one. Residence A District, southerly terminus of Lincoln Avenue, one hundred and fifty feet south of Hancock Street, Brentwood.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Roxantrella Dynamic Expediting Services with offices at two three one Islip Avenue, Islip, New York. We're here tonight to establish a two-family, family use only. It's based on medical and all of the required documentation has been submitted.
The documentation is in the file.
Yes.
Anybody else like to be heard in this matter? I'll take a motion, please.
I make a motion to grant the application.
Second, please.
For a period of three years?
Yes.
Yes, period of three years, you got a second?
I think for a second.
All in favor? All right, application's granted for a period of three years.
Thank you, happy holidays.
Bye-bye. Application number seven twenty dash twenty-five, Daniel Jose Bakay, permission to use dwelling for two family, family use only pursuant to Islip Town Code, section sixty-eight dash four one nine point one. Anybody here on that application? Application number seven twenty-one dash twenty-five, William Conley Irrevocable Trust and Dolores Conley Irrevocable Trust. Permission to leave pool patio having side yard of four feet instead of required six feet and to renew permit for accessory apartment pursuant to Islip Town Code, section sixty-eight dash six one six. Residence A District, south side of Rosemary Place, three hundred feet west of Campbell Lane, East Islip.
Could just give us your name and address, please?
William and Dolores Conley, forty-four Rosemary Place, East Islip, New York.
Thank you. And you hear on the pool patio side yard?
Yes.
Planning any comments?
No comment.
Is anyone else that'd like to be heard in this matter?
And, and we're also, whenever a variance application has to come in close to a renewal, we encourage the applicants to put the applications together. So, we're also considering renewal, which would have been done a public session anyway, of their accessory apartment.
Correct. Okay, take a motion then?
I give Mr. Chairman the motion to grant the application for the pool and also for the accessory apartment for thirty, about three years.
Second.
All in favor? Application's granted, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a nice holiday.
You too.
Application number seven twenty-two dash twenty-five, Dolisha Natasha Sinan and Anne-Marie Madu. Permission to leave patio on rear property line not having required setback of four feet. Residence B District, south side of Moffett Boulevard, one hundred feet west of Garfield Avenue, East Islip.
Good evening, Rudy Sinan, and here representing, oh, sorry, Rudy Sinan here representing Natasha Sinan, sixteen Moffett Boulevard, East Islip, New York.
And you hear on just the patio side yard?
Yes.
A rear yard, rear yard?
Yes.
Okay. Planning any comments?
No comment.
Is anyone else that'd like to be heard in this matter? Okay, I'll take a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to grant the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, happy holidays.
Thank you.
Application number seven twenty-three dash twenty-five, Kyle and Christina Pielino. Permission to leave roofed over patio resulting in floor area ratio of twenty-eight percent instead of permitted twenty-five percent. Shed having side yard of one point nine feet instead of required two feet. Pool patio having side yard of four point one feet and rear yard of three point eight feet instead of required six feet each. And pool equipment having side and rear yard of five feet instead of required six feet each. Residence B District, south side of Doherty Avenue, six hundred and twenty feet west of Coates Avenue, Holbrook.
Sir, your name and address?
Yes, Kyle Cialino, one twenty-two Doherty Ave, Holbrook, New York, one one seven four one.
Okay, you hear on the, you got a roofed over patio with a floor area ratio, side yard on the shed?
Yes.
Pool patio, pool equipment. Planning any comments on this?
No comment.
Okay. Anybody else that'd like to be heard in this matter? I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the application.
All in favor? Application's granted.
Thank you, happy holidays.
Application number seven twenty-four dash twenty-five, Thomas and Cheryl Huber. Permission to erect roofed over deck leaving floor area ratio of twenty-nine point three three percent instead of permitted twenty-five percent. Residence A District, west side of Namdak Avenue, three hundred and seventy-five feet south of Runyon Street, Beishore.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name's Tina Weber with Boulder Flure Architects. Our office is located at eighty-five East Main Street in Beishore, New York, one one seven zero six. Here on behalf of the homeowners and we're here tonight proposing a roof over an existing deck with a FAR of twenty-nine point three three percent. And I'll take any questions from the board.
Planning any comments?
No comment.
Is anyone else that'd like to be heard in this matter? All right, I'll take a motion, please.
Be sure.
I'll make a motion again.
Second.
All in favor? Application's granted.
Thank you.
Application number seven twenty-five dash twenty-five, Raul Sanchez. Permission to erect second story addition leaving floor area ratio of twenty-nine point eight seven percent instead of permitted twenty-five percent. To leave patios, onside property line and side yard of two point two feet and driveway having side yard of one point one feet instead of required four feet each. Residence B District, east side of Pine Grove Boulevard, three hundred and twenty feet south of Prospect Place, Beishore.
Good evening, Denise Trifaro, DTT Design, eleven sixty-five Broadway Avenue in Holbrook.
Good evening, Rose Sanchez, address one six seven nine Pine Grove Boulevard, Beishore, one one seven zero six.
Thank you.
We're here this evening asking for a twenty-nine point eight seven percent FAR. The current house is a fire job and they want to just do a small extension on the top level to extend their main bedroom to have a master bath also in there. So, that's what's making it go over to the twenty-nine point eight seven. And the existing driveway that goes into a patio in the back is what, existing, that is the side yard of one point one in the front by the driveway and the two point two in the rear of the property for the patio.
Seems like the public's getting the idea that we're having riots over that. Seems that way.
Any questions from the board? Planning any comments?
No comment.
Is anyone else that'd like to be heard in this matter? All right, I'll take a motion, please.
Be sure.
I'll make a motion again.
Second.
All in favor? Application's granted.
Thank you.
Application number seven twenty-six dash twenty-five, Diane Di Stefano. Permission to erect one-story addition five point six by twelve point nine leaving side yard of thirteen point two feet instead of required fourteen feet and one-story addition six by twelve point seven leaving floor area ratio of twenty-eight point one percent instead of permitted twenty-five percent. To leave patio and driveway, onside property line not having required setback of four feet each. Residence B District, east side of Washington Avenue, twenty-four point four six feet north of Briar Circle, West Saddle.
Good evening, my name is Michael Sedano, I'm the architect for the project. Offices located at ninety Senex Avenue, Center Mauritius, New York, one one nine three four. We are here this evening seeking a relaxation in the side yard setback to thirteen point two where fourteen is required. The thirteen point two is an existing side yard setback, so we won't be encroaching any further than what's currently there. We're over the FAR, we're seeking relaxation from the twenty-five to twenty-eight point one. And also the driveway, we're seeking relaxation for the driveway, for the four-foot minimum side yard requirement. Keeping with neighborhood, existing properties in that area have similar situations, so we feel it's minor character.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
No questions.
No questions. Planning any comments?
No comment.
Is there anyone else that'd like to be heard in this application? All right, I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion, grant the application.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, application's granted.
Thank you, happy holidays.
Thank you.
Application number six thirty-nine dash twenty-five, Razib Ahmed and Laboni Sultana. To renew permit for accessory apartment pursuant to Islip Town Code, section sixty-eight dash six one six. Residence A District, east side of Thompson Drive, two hundred feet south of Fire Road, Beishore.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Razib Ahmed. My address is one three nine nine Thompson Drive, Beishore, New York, one one seven zero six.
Thank you. And you hear on the renewal of the accessory apartment permit?
Yes, I have a permit.
She was here last time, we picked this date.
Planning any comments?
No.
Is there anyone else that'd like to be heard in this?
Yeah, there, there's some.
Please come up. Sir, if you could step aside, let them speak.
Elizabeth Savino, thirteen ninety-seven Thompson Drive, Beishore.
Cody Berry, thirteen ninety-seven Thompson Drive, Beishore, New York. So, I'm trying to think of how to word this. Yeah, so, what we're trying to figure out is the, um, which apartment is this for that we're trying to, that they're trying to seek approval for? Which bring us, well, that's, yes, that's the issue that we were trying to raise the last time we were here. So, there's multiple apartments. We know of one because we were, we've been in the house for thirty-plus years. The one was an accessory apartment built by the two-time previous owners.
The Shaw's.
The Shaw's, uh, which was a legal apartment built. You guys have the approval for it, that's what, I'm assuming you guys are looking to renew? The rear accessory apartment on the backside of the house? Okay, well, that, they're looking to renew. Yeah.
Well, or send pictures.
There's pictures.
There's pictures. So, basement apartment, uh, access was put in, a walkway to the basement apartment. Tenants walking in and out of the apartment.
I'll be recording the ones.
Yes. I believe three.
The, the number of cars.
And the number of tenants that I've seen walk in and out of the basement apartment. And an altercation that I had with one of the tenants.
Do you think there's going in?
Yes. Three. Uh, it's been a year and a half now since the, uh, oh, the last time I saw them, every day.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, there's one, that's the legal one, which we believe has one tenant. Then there was another apartment put in, in the basement, a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
Let's just say it's two, just to be safe, because we can guarantee we have proof of the, uh, the entry, uh, being built. So, let's just say it's two for, what was that? Well, the second one would be the basement one. The legal one on the first floor in the rear of the house that we've known about for as long as we've lived there, that's essentially been there.
The tenant's car alarm kept on going off at all hours of the night. Two o'clock, three o'clock, four o'clock.
Late. If, if it was a heavy wind, it would set the alarm off. It was an aftermarket alarm.
No.
No.
No, and not even probably a tenant that was on the lease. Correct. Correct.
Yeah.
So, his car was, alarm was going off at all hours. One day I saw him coming out and I said, you know, is there something we could do about the alarm? And he proceeded the, the tenant.
The owner of the vehicle, who we believe is an illegal tenant.
Right. And he basically, you know, cursed me out and then my husband, when he was alive, called Russell. Russell came over with the tenant, but not the guy.
No.
Okay, he came over with the tenant from the basement apartment, but that was not the driver of the vehicle, it was a truck that was there. Um, and they apologized. But again, I, as a single woman living in the house, I don't know who's there. And I don't want altercations with these people that I, you know, again, the accessory apartment was there for thirty, you know, thirty years.
Yeah.
Yes. I have a, uh, the legal one apartment and the basement, I have it like, uh, my friend living there.
Did you say your family is living there?
Yeah, before, it was my family, but my father and mother go back to my country. Then after, my friend is leaving a few months.
But you're allowed one apartment.
Yeah, but is there a kitchen?
And what's in the basement?
It's just a bedroom, nothing else.
There's no kitchen?
No kitchen.
No bathroom?
Now there's a heat and now there's a cook and you.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Does he have access to the upstairs?
No, yeah, they have inside upstairs, the, uh, the room, yeah.
It's his downstairs. It's his downstairs.
Wait, it's his basement.
It's not, it's my.
I know, but it's not, it's not like this ten part.
It's his friend.
Your, the legal tenant, how much did they pay him then?
It's like seventeen hundred.
Okay, and what does your friend pay him?
What is that?
What does your friend pay him, you staying basement?
Oh, he doesn't, uh, he paid like, uh, around like thousand dollars something.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that'd like to be heard in this matter?
So, just the, so there's a note of it, though, that's the main thing. So, when we call phone, unfortunately, we'd be referred in this case. So.
Understood, all right. Understood, okay, thank you.
establish legal non-conforming use of accessory structure and to leave less than twenty-five percent expansion, having height of sixteen feet instead of permitted fourteen feet and to leave driveway having side yard of one point nine feet instead of required four feet. Residence A District, east side of Matinacock Avenue, one hundred feet north of Manistee Lane, East Islip.
Thomas B. Licari, one twenty-seven, West Main Street, East Islip. Good evening, members of the board. I had submitted earlier, uh, last week, a package for each one of you, which included several affidavits. Ron Fuchsia, Lisa McQuilkin, Tyler Schroeder, Margaret Cantazati, Paul Cantazati, Randy Bezoggi. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I've submitted a package with several affidavits last week, or two weeks ago. Lisa McQuilkin, who is here to testify. Ron Fuchsia, a builder, whose father actually built this property back in the fifties or sixties. Tyler Schroeder, Margaret Canton Zarati, and I apologize if I'm, I'm sorry. Paul Cantanzari, Randy Bezoggi, and some older affidavits from John Horton and Robert Denise. I just want to submit two more, uh, applic-, affidavits that did not get included in the package, if I could put them up here? I didn't make copies of that and I apologize. Okay, the gist of all this. This property was, this property was built back in the fifties. The original dwelling was built in the thirties. Uh, this was all a summer community. The, the main house and the accessory building were unheated except for some kerosene heaters. My client purchased the property with his parents in nineteen seventy-nine. Uh, and in nineteen eighty-three, there was a fire in the main dwelling at which time the accessory building was, uh, convert, was converted from storage from a workout shop. I, I can't, I can't hear you. Pre-existing, well, well, well preceded the code, yes. I, I have a, we, I've done my calculations and I submitted, one of the things I did submit was the calculation of the, uh, small expansion of a dormer back in nineteen eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, when the property was used as a temporary residence while the main structure was being rebuilt. Uh, the accessory structure over the years has been used from everything from a storage, from a, uh, a man cave to, uh, quarters for, uh, my client's son. My son, my client's son had to shower back there because he worked for compost in town of Islip and recycling. The three-piece bathroom that's currently there was there well before nineteen eighty. Uh, and the pictures that I've submitted in the package also show nineteen eighty pictures of the accessory dwelling and of the interior bathroom back, uh, which, which was before nineteen eighty. The use of the accessory building will be subordinate to the main structure. It will not be used as a rental. Uh, back when this place was, uh, my client bought the property, there were really no restrictions, uh, that, that was specifically defined as to an accessory structure regarding the bathroom, the three-piece versus a two-piece bathroom. It's been used over the years, everything from storage to an office, to a workout room, to a temporary apartment while the main house was being rebuilt in the mid-eighties. It has heat. That's the, that original is the bathroom from before nineteen eighty that was removed and is now a shower. It was a shower back in eighty-one or eighty-two. The pictures that, uh, I presented date back to nineteen eighty. My client took them when he purchased the house. Uh, we have Lisa McQuilkin here, who's known the house since nineteen eighty and has done the survey and has conferred my calculations as to the dormer expansion of a hundred square feet. The upstairs is currently being used as storage and will only be used as storage. Yes, I do. I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I have Lisa McQuilkin. Lisa, uh, serves dual purposes. She is a surveyor recognized in the town of Islip and she's also familiar with the property. She's been friends with my clients since they were in high school.
Mr. Licari, the photograph that you handed up of the bathroom?
Yes.
It says that original three-piece bath pre-nineteen eighty.
Yes.
There it is.
The photo's not from nineteen eighty.
Oh, I have the original photos here.
Is this the photo from nineteen eighty?
That's a photo from nineteen eighty, yes.
Okay, but you got a problem. You have a battery-powered sawzall and they didn't have them forty-five years ago. They did not have battery-powered sawzalls forty-five years ago and know that.
Oh, those, that, the sawzall was there, if you see, that, that bathroom was under reconstruction. He was taking the tub out, which is why the.
The photo's from nineteen eighty?
No, no, he, he had to take the tub out. The tub is nineteen eighty.
That's not what you said. I asked you, when was the photograph, it said nineteen eighty?
When did you take the tub?
Yeah. Let's, let's listen to the witnesses.
When was the photograph taken?
Okay.
The photograph was probably taken in the late eighties. I'm sorry, Peter Velker, sixty-five Matinacock Avenue, East Islip, New York, one one seven three zero. I purchased this house in nineteen seventy-nine.
All right. Why don't you tell us what happened from nineteen seventy-nine when you purchased it with regard to the use of this accessory?
In nineteen, in nineteen seventy-nine, I purchased a house.
Okay.
Uh, through my parents. They lent me the money. I'm a New York City fireman, retired, and I went on vacation in nineteen eighty-three. I get a phone call down at Bridge Village Islands that your house is burnt down to the ground, because I let my sister use the house, watching it for me. Okay? Shortly after that, I, to have a place to stay, I moved from nowhere to the garage.
Okay.
Because there was a three-piece bathroom in the garage with that tub.
Right.
Okay.
And you used the bathroom while you stayed there, correct?
I used the bathroom as I, while I stayed there.
And how long did you stay there?
A few years, because I had a lot of broken leg. I had a, a lot of incidences, which I, I don't know if they're up there or not.
He had a lot of health problems also.
Okay, and I understand, he's doing a great job. What happened after you stayed there? Can you tell us what happened at that point?
After I stayed there, I started building a new house in the front.
Okay.
Okay, but when I was trying to build a new house in the front, they wanted to amputate my leg. I was in the hospital for six months. Then I was on a full cast for two and a half years. Then I had a hospital bill of over a hundred and something thousand dollars and I said, I'm not going to.
And I feel bad about that, but what I'm really hearing, I'm concerned more about the structure. Why don't you tell us what happened with the structure after you vacated and went back to your new house?
I just left it.
Okay, and it's been there continuously in that condition since that point, correct?
Pretty much, yes.
And you, you took, you took the bathtub out and what else did you do?
I took the bathtub out and just made it a shower, because I used to actually, I had a dog then, that's where the dog got washed. And then when my son got a job at the town of Islip, he was in the recycling plant. And when he came home, the house smelled like a garbage pail. It was horrible, okay? So, that's where he would shower. Now he works at the compost yard. The place is now storage.
Yeah.
Nobody's, nobody's living in there right now.
There, there is no kitchen.
Okay.
There's no kitchen.
Kitchen was a little years ago.
Kitchen was a many years ago.
Okay. Now, you mentioned you have other witnesses?
Is that Lisa McQuilkin? Lisa?
Hello, Lisa McQuilkin, land surveyor, two seventy-four East Main Street, East Islip, New York. Um, so, I've been friends with Pete since high school. I've known the structure, this, this garage, this, whatever the heck you want to call it, this accessory structure. It's been the same height, that I can verify. Um, while the older surveys may not have the heights on it, because you guys weren't so tough back then, you know what I'm saying? Didn't ask me for all that stuff. But, you know, since then, I've been putting, you know, heights on garages and trying not to get all my customers in trouble, you know? But, um, it has been the same height, although they did put a dormer on it at some point. Uh, the height still remains the same, the structure is still the same, the exterior is still the same.
Did you look at the photograph?
It's pretty old.
When this went in in what year?
The, what?
It was built in what year? It was built somewhere, according to, uh, the builder's son, his father built it in the fifties or the sixties.
Oh, you want to ask Patricia Wills's?
Cottage, the whole complex really had no heat. It was not used year-round.
Hey, Mr. Licari, I just have a question. We have a deed here from, looks like, is this two thousand and four, from a Patricia Wills.
We have a deed here from, looks like, is this 2004, from a Patricia Wills to Peter Velker. I would just ask, who is Patricia Wills? Patricia was his ex-wife. Okay. So it's family-related? Yeah, it's been family, it's been owned by Peter or his family since 1979. The use here is clearly subordinate to the main structure. It is built without, there were no restrictions back in the early '80s. I think the restrictions came in in the late '90s or 2000s, as to the size of the bathroom. I know the height has changed since then, but when this was built, the height was the same. My calculations as to the dormer addition was about 101 square feet, or 16 percent, well under the 25 percent allowable for a pre-existing structure. Okay. Do you have any other witnesses, Mr. LeCary? Some people, some of the neighbors are here. Okay.
My name's Margaret Katanzari, 63, Matinecock Avenue, East Islip.
And how long have you lived at that address?
Since 1980.
Okay. And you're familiar with the property and the structure that we're talking about here?
Yes, sir.
Tell us what you know about it since 1980.
Well, when we moved in, the structure was there, and it's just always been the same, pretty much.
Okay. Tell us what it's been used for, since you're aware, in 1980.
Well, I'm aware it was used when his house burned down.
Okay.
And he needed to stay there. That's pretty much it.
Okay. And since that time, since he hasn't been staying there, what else have you observed about the house, the structure?
Basically, that's it. I mean, we were in there, I did receive, because at the time, he had no electric, no nothing. So we kind of hooked up an extension cord for a little bit, to just give him light to get in there. And I saw the bathroom, and pretty much, that's all I...
Okay. And that, and you personally saw all that?
I'm sorry?
You saw that yourself, you personally?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And the height is the same today?
Yes.
As it was back in 1980?
Yes. It looks the same.
Thank you. Sure. Just as an aside, we would certainly be willing to covenant that this will not be converted into an apartment. No kitchen will be installed. It was removed years ago, after my client had used it, so... Okay. So if we can approve it, subject to that, we'll consider that, okay? Thank you.
Do you have any other witnesses?
That's it, I think. Okay. I think...
Does anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? No? All right.
Yeah.
You want to take a motion?
Yeah, take a motion to grant the application based upon the evidence presented by the council of...
Subject to the covenants?
Subject to the covenant, yeah.
I get a second, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, gentlemen. Ladies, thank you.
Okay. Okay. No. You have to take off. We almost did it on the...
We have more witnesses. I can tell they showed up.
Oh.
You brought the big guns.
Yeah.
All right, Glenn Graham.
Yeah, now we get Glenn's last hurrah. She's a good surveyor. Application number 729-25, Keith Kirschenhider and Lori Genitascio. Permission to erect second-story addition, 8.6 by 27.9, leaving floor area ratio of 26 percent instead of permitted 25 percent. Residence A District, north side of Plum Place, 619.8 feet west of Meeks Lane, Islip.
Good evening. Glenn Graham with Graham Associates, 256 Orinoco Drive, Bright Waters, New York, representing the owners. This is a small addition to a two-story house, over the exact footprint of the house, and it's 1 percent. We're asking for an FAR. It just can't be achieved without the 1 percent to get a master suite.
Any questions from the board?
No questions.
Planning any comments?
No comment.
Is there anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? I'll take a motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Application's great.
Thank you.
Application number 730-25, Thomas Ruskin. Permission to install hot tub, leaving side yard of seven feet instead of required 10 feet. Residence B, A.A. District, west side of Ivy Avenue, 210 feet north of Neptune Walk, Seaview.
Good evening. Glenn Graham with Graham, Grammas.
Is he the Seaview Association president?
Yes, he is.
He's usually here opposing everybody's application.
Not for a long time. He's been very helpful, actually, to me, anyway.
He's mellow.
Yes.
Is he in opposition of this application?
Not at all. I do have two letters from the adjacent neighbors in support of the application I can submit. It's simply for a hot tub with a side yard setback of seven and 10, instead of 10. The reason we're asking for that, it could be put in a conforming location, but we're trying to keep it on the ground, so it's private to both neighbors. So, otherwise, it would be up six feet in the air elevated with the house.
Planning any comments?
I have nothing further to add.
Is anyone else would like to be heard in this matter? No? All right. Should we work on the letters, or...
I just sent them to the file. Yeah, here they come.
All right, I'll take a motion, please.
I'm motioning that we grant the application for that.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And here we go. Application number 731-25, 28 Evergreen Realty LLC. Permission to erect first story and second story additions, resulting in floor area ratio of 38.71 percent instead of permitted 30 percent, and to erect roofed-over deck, leaving front yard of 19.1 feet instead of required 25 feet. Residence B, A.A. District, east side of Evergreen Avenue, 200 feet south of Central Walk, Seaview.
Good evening. Glenn Graham with Graham Associates, 256 Orinoco Drive, Bright Waters, New York. This application involves a, in addition to a two-story home, the FAR has precedent, and I just wanted to explain a little bit. The house is a modern house, and what we're trying to create there, if you look at the rendering, is a covered front porch. That covered front porch, because it exceeds three feet in height, adds 2.7 percent to the FAR. So without that, we would be lower and closer to the 30 percent that's allowable. However, this board has granted, to me, in 2015, one of my applications was granted at 42, 40.2 percent. That was case 268-15. As recently as 2020, case 044-20, was also granted a relief of 39.2. And then I have another application. Those two were after 2012, when the height of decks came into play. I do have one from 2011, that was also granted 42 percent. I bring that one up because it's similar in nature to the one we're in front of you today. This house, 2011, 344-11, it was granted 42 percent. That case also had a conforming house, same as ours here. Our FAR is 29 percent for house only. So the rest of the FAR comes into play with the roof deck and the covered balcony that we're asking for tonight. So, take any questions. That's a nice rendering.
Is this what it's going to look like?
Yes. It's a two-story home now, that was renovated about 2018. It was just recently resold, and they want to add a little bit to the second floor and add that front porch.
What's the...
About 4 percent lower than what we're asking for now, maybe, maybe five. What's triggering this inflated FAR is that covered balcony adds 2.7 percent. And it's, it's normally a permitted encroachment and wouldn't be included in FAR, but the house indents, it doesn't have a flat face, so you're allowed up to six feet. On that indent, it's eight feet. So that two foot of the indent is adding 3 percent to the FAR, or 2.7 percent.
Why?
Ah, it exists. That's the footprint of the house. We're only adding to the second floor.
When you're adding, so, does the first floor...
It's, it's similar. This is a modern house, but a new owner is changing it, and the big change is that front porch. Let me see if I can give you some other numbers, if you need. Yeah, we're adding, the front porch are 2.7 percent, and the second floor, we're adding about 6 percent to the FAR. Yes, it is. Yep. So it would be a big improvement to give it a nice front porch and make it look a little bit better than that. Again, I had precedent of three, that I've done in front of the board with higher FARs. And you know as well as I do, those precedents were granted from other precedents. We've, most of the houses that I've been doing in Seaview have all been a 39 percent
So to speak to some of the things he was mentioning there, we didn't really talk about the front yard, but he's right, because it's elevated, they don't get a permitted encroachment. I'm not sure if that was really our intention. I don't think the front yard setback is at issue, in case anybody was wondering, which I'm not sure anybody was. He's also correct with regards to about 2.7 percent of the FAR is this front covered porch. Now, covered porches often won't count whatsoever for FAR. We have a provision in there that six feet in depth or less doesn't count whatsoever, even if it's roofed over. So what he was pointing out there was, in the central part of it, it projects out eight feet. He has the two wings of the house that go out six feet, and the center, because the two wings are out six feet, to create a uniform frontage. He has that part of it going out eight feet, six feet on the one sides, eight feet in the center, which means the entire front covered porch is counting.
How much is the front?
About 2.7 percent. So it would be 36.01, I think you calculated without it?
Yes.
So I guess, really, then, the question is that, it could be very slightly modified to not count, if he just brought the two feet in. Visually, it wouldn't really make too much of a difference, to be honest. So I guess it's really either, he could make that slight modification, get it down to about 36, or it could just be kind of taken into consideration that because of the way the front projection of the house comes out, to have the more uniform look, which he might believe is more architecturally pleasing. It's only maybe a couple dozen square footage increase overall, as compared, but it ends up, based on the way that the code reads, adding 2.7 percent.
Nick, I have two questions.
Sure.
The precedent is offered by the greater FAR.
I have the two cases he cited at 40.2. I'm not, I'm not sure what the third one is that you had mentioned.
Okay. It seems like it's 2.77, if you have anybody around.
2.7 is the front roof-over porch, yes, which in many circumstances could be discounted based on code.
It's a little smaller, wouldn't count.
If it was a bit smaller in the one section, the entire front porch wouldn't count, correct?
If it's in a section, smaller there.
If it was brought in two feet, the entire thing wouldn't count, correct?
Trying to find out the precedent, 40 percent, is that much greater in that it's volume of house, as opposed to just whole things?
Um...
Trying to find out what's driving it, you know? I mean, I get it.
Well, well, so, one of them was 40.2, 14 and a half percent of which is decking, so maybe about 26 percent is not. The other one, I'm not sure exactly how much was decking. That one was, actually, the grant was reduced to 39.2. That's still higher than what they're requesting.
I, I, I get where you're coming from.
It's on the cusp, is what I would call it, S. I think the board could go either way on that. It's really just a matter of the front porch. Visually, if they changed it, it wouldn't make a huge difference, but it is currently counting because of the way that it's configured.
To be clear, the FAR proposed for this house only is 29.41 percent. The rest of that, third, what we're asking for, the 38 and change, is all decking. 2.7 of that is the porch, some of it's on a roof deck, some of it's on a balcony. So that's why I referenced the case from 2011, that 42 percent, because the house also was conforming, and the rest of it was decking, similar to ours. All nature and character.
No, I don't really have anything further to add.
Is there anyone else would like to be heard in this matter?
Thank you.
Is this your last one, or...
Thank you all for working with me for 29 years. So yes, I am done.
You retired?
Yes. Appreciate it. Nope, I'm just going to try to enjoy life. I sold my company and having, just, the, yes. Yes. Nah. I, I mean it sincerely. Thank you, it was a pleasure working with every one of you, so, yeah. Thank you. Well, that's a shock to hear that, but thank you. We had some battles over the years, but...
Is this your last application in front of us, or your last application ever?
Hopefully ever.
Good.
Unless somebody pays me a lot of money to consult for something.
Uh-oh.
You're walking out of the store.
Next Thursday, I'm, I'm done, yeah.
You close shop, and you're out.
I sold my business, and I'm a consultant. Going to do a little side work at home, but nothing crazy.
Good luck.
Yeah. Certainly no zoning applications.
You'll miss it.
But, thank you. Happy holidays, everybody.
Congratulations.
Yes, good luck.
Thank you.
Application number 732-25, Reyna Moreno. Permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to Islip Town Code, Section 68-602, having gross floor area of 968 square feet instead of permitted 800 square feet, resulting in floor area ratio of 31.3 percent instead of permitted 25 percent, and to leave driveway having side yard of 0.8 feet instead of required four feet. Residence B District, east side of Branch Avenue, 80 feet south of Sassifast Street, Central Islip.
Hi, good evening. Giovanni Mata, A. Wendy Lane, Brentwood, New York, 11717, from Global Processing Network, and mailing address is P.O. Box 149, Central Islip, New York, 11722. So this is an application for, to maintain an accessory apartment and the front portico, and also a, the accessory apartment, the front portico in the AC. We submitted the application to the building department, and the building department, I sent you a letter from our graphic designer, he just sent it today, I'm sorry, that's why. We just submitted it today. So the accessory apartment has an extra amount of square footage due to the boiler room being included in the design, and I ask our graphic designer to clarify that for the board. The owner. Oh, do you mean who, in, is it an ingrown floor? So, yeah. The ingrown floor.
You want them to leave?
In the ingrown floor, yes. And has access to the, to the, to the lory, yes, yes.
And has separate entrance to the rest of the house?
Can I consult my, my dons? Sorry.
Please.
Separate, yes. We'll get it separated.
What's that?
Separate, separate, yes.
Separate. So how does the owner have access to the...
No. The accessory apartment is for the owner, actually. The owner wants to live there most of the time, yeah. It's only her and her husband. Yeah.
So then the accessory apartment's upstairs?
So then the accessory apartment's upstairs?
You hadn't mentioned that to this date, Giovanni.
Sorry, repeat it again? No, no, it is an in-ground, well. Okay, yeah, no, no, so, well. Yeah, okay. Yeah, he's the. Correct, yeah. So it's, yeah, so it's about eight, yeah, I'm sorry, maybe he, okay, so it's about. Correct, yeah. So the correct amount is about eight thirty, is 830, based on my calculations, is 830? Yeah, so, but based on my calculate, so if you, yes, yeah, so if you look on the plan, it's 11 by, the boiler room is 11 by, I'm sorry, 12 by 10, so it's 130, so that's what you should, you should take out from the total amount. So it's 130, actually, 830, I'm sorry, instead of square footage. Correct, yeah. And I apologize for that, so, but then, if you look at the plan on page three, 800, on the in-ground level, is, the boiler room measures is there. And it's 12.9 times 10.11, so I took, I did the measures, it was about 162, so which deducts from the 869 that we have in total for the, for the apartment.
I'm sorry if this has already been addressed, but could you explain why the boiler and laundry room should not be considered part of the apartment? Is it, is it accessible otherwise? Was that answered?
So, we weren't, we excluded in the original plans and the building department requested for us to include it in there. We had, the designer had actually left it there out because, I mean, there is really nothing, well, it's not habitable, you know, for us to have it there, but.
Right, but habitable is not really the only consideration. Is the boiler and laundry room, is it, is it part of the accessory apartment? Can you access it from there?
Yes, exactly. It is in there, so that's why they. No, just from the accessory apartment.
Which is the basement area, or the first floor?
That was, that was not my intention of, sorry. Sure, if you, if we have an opportunity for that, yeah, that'd be great. No, yes, I understand, absolutely, yes, and I clarified that with the, with the engineer also. If we can in general request that officially, yes. Yes, I understand that, yes. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, the only, I heard what you're saying, that you're, you're adjourning it. Hi, am I? Got you. Hi, my name is Marcia Thompson and I live at 166 Branch Avenue, Central Islip, the house directly across the street. I'm not sure what they were explaining. I just recently got the letter. I work a lot, so I just rushed over here. As far as I know, there's an addition in the back of the yard. It looks like a huge shed, which is not a shed. So that's what I thought was in question. I am hearing a basement. It's not a basement. It's a big structure that's in the backyard, that's an eyesore, and to me, it's a problem for the integrity of the neighborhood. We've had issues with this house from the time they bought it, with cars parking all over the place, people coming and going. Right now, as far as to my knowledge, I know there's at least four families, different families, that are living there right now. So to give permission to have a structure that's, that does not go with the integrity of the neighborhood, I think that's a big, major issue and we all agree with that. We all have issues with that. Well, it's not a shed. It looks like a ginormous structure that they built. It's like triple the size of a shed. That, in the back, yes, that, in the back there.
Yeah, so to speak to what she's saying, there's a stop work order about this. Correct. There was a stop work order issued for the structure. It was built without permit, or was being constructed without permit. Now, I don't know if that, I don't believe this is what's currently being addressed tonight, but to speak to what she's talking about, yes, there is a structure there. There was a stop work order issued.
You're welcome. Well, I'm just hoping there's nothing else that they're building other than that, because.
Hi, my name is Hugo Militano. I live in 169 Branch Avenue, in the corner, next to the, and whatever she say, that's a problem. Besides what she say, the thing is with the cars, the parking of the cars. You bring more people and there's no room for the cars, and they start to take yours, your place, you're parking that, to them. And that's a problem, yes. Yeah, that shed is not a shed. If you see in the pictures and everything, that's huge. And it's very high and I know in the code, you got some height to do things, and that, that is too much. Then, on the outside, I don't see any windows. But when, what they were doing, when they were building it, they did like a two little rooms, could be a bathroom, something else. And even in, in the car, they, you send me, they say, for additional apartment. Accessory, I'm sorry, apartment, and I don't know how many people live in there. You know, that's another problem too. And you see strange faces all the time and, I don't, you know, I'm living in there for 25 years. And always was a kind of nice area and I, I hope keeps being like that.
My name is Anson Marshall, 161 Branch Avenue, Central Islip, Long Island, 11722. I live on the other side of that house. And this is a single-family homes. And they're cutting it up, splitting it up, and they're making multi-dwellings. That's what's going on. And we can't live in a community, our taxes are high, and we, like you said, we have a bunch of strange people coming around. People, if they open up that dwelling in the back, you got people going to the back, you got people going to the side. And overheard for the other situation, he claims the owner lived there, the owner do not live there. I just met the owner, he came to my house Sunday, to try to like, more or less butter me up, so I wouldn't say something. He said he live, he don't live there. That's the first, that's the first time I've met that man. That's the first time I ever seen him. I lived there for 34 years. Okay? You know, so, I'm just saying, you know? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, okay. No, I just would like to officially adjourn the meeting and even though it's not in this topic for the agenda, the shed has been submitted for the permit? Yes, in case, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Application number 733-25, Vincent and Dana Papalardo, trustees of the Vincent and Dana Papalardo Living Trust. Permission to erect one-story addition, 12.8 by 30.4, leaving side yard of 15 feet instead of required 25 feet. Residence AAA District, northeast corner of Post Lane and Saxon Avenue, Bayshore.
Hello, my name is Chris Alvino. I work for Harold Gebhardt, Architect 363, North Wellwood Avenue, Lindenhurst.
Are you here, sir, for the one-story addition?
Correct, I'm here with the Papalardos. They're here tonight with me. We're looking to put a one-story addition on the north side of the house. Most of the, a lot of the addition is kind of tucked away into that little alcove there that's existing. 11.3 by 28.6, little indentation there. And we're just adding a couple of bathrooms, bathroom and a couple of bedrooms.
Yeah, well, okay. It's not supported, that I've seen, really. No, it's, it's not supported, and it's, it's not a situation where the, they do have a neighbor to their side, so it's not, because there's some areas around here where maybe they're like next to the water or something. This is not one of those cases. Sure. None. Not that I'm aware of.
Well, when we were putting this together to get some extra space, you know, initially, they were planning on going above the house, on top of the house. We didn't want to do that and ruin the, the look of the house, because the house is very, is a good-looking house. They needed some extra bedroom space.
The rest of the neighborhood doesn't look like this.
Well, I don't think it's taken away from the character and neighborhood. It's, it's a good-looking addition, if you look at the addition, it's. Well, we're not setting a precedent. There's no. Yeah, but it's 15, we're talking about 15 feet. Well, we have 50 feet on the other side, 50.5 feet. It's the only, it's the only, why are you getting all excited? I don't understand why everyone's getting all excited. I'm doing this 35 years. I've been coming before this board. And with Harold Gebhardt, 35 years, I've gotten 15-foot side yard setbacks approved in this area before. I've been coming in before this board for 35 feet. 15-foot setback, a 15-foot setback is, is not a very large, it's not a very big variance for what we're asking for here. I mean, there are 15-foot setbacks in Islip. I mean, a lot of areas of Islip, and this. I'm not sure, I'm not sure about 500 feet, but not, but not far from this. Not far from this. There are, there are other 15-foot setbacks in, in the town of Islip. This is not, if you look at what we're doing to the, if you look at the site plan, if you look at the site plan, what we're adding to this house and what we have left remaining on the property, it's, it's not, it's not a large variance by any stretch of the imagination. It's only one variance we're here for. And we're adding, and, and we put it in a spot that's a very, a very strategic spot, if you look at the plan of the house.
So.
Look at the plan of the house, what we're looking to do here.
Sir, so, to try to speak to this, it's.
Do you guys have.
I don't disagree.
Do you gentlemen have a plan of the house? You have a floor plan of the house? Okay. Well, I'm asking if you have a. Well, it is relevant. Let me tell you why. Can I, if I could explain it without anyone getting excited. I'm gonna get excited. Well, how is, how, that's another thing. I've been doing this for years. How's a floor plan not required? Elevation not required? If we're asking for. Well, okay. If we're talking about the layout of the house, now, there isn't one floor plan of the house up there?
You didn't file the application. Had you filed the application, you would understand that a floor plan is not a requirement. So that's why the gentlemen don't have one in front of them.
In this floor plan of the house, the sleep, if you're looking at the survey, on the east, the rear end of the property, where that masonry patio is, both masonry patios are, that's living areas of the house. To the left in the back is a, is a large den, it's a large living room. So we can't put bedrooms behind that. And if you look at the other side, it's the living room. We have the den and living room, and we have a dining area. If you look at the site plan, you see that little hexagon area, the little octagon area there? That's a, that's a kitchen at breakfast area. There is no other way area to put this bedroom area. That's why we picked this little, this little spot where it tucks in a little bit. You have 11, we're utilizing an area of the house that's already tucked in. It's on the top half, it's 10.1 feet. On the bottom portion of where we're adding, where you see on the site plan, it says AC units, that little area, it's like a dead zone. It's not doing anything. It's just got the AC units there. And there's already, there's already bedrooms in that area, so it's really a really great spot to put.
Sir, I don't disagree that it's a good spot in that sense. You're right, there's a dead zone there, but the, the rest of the house over on that section has completely conforming setbacks. So it's not that you're tucking it in that corner, it's that you're pushing it too far towards the, the property line.
Yeah, but we're not going for a, a, a FAR here. We're going for just a side yard. Well, that's why I'm in front of the variance. That's why I'm in front of you people. I believe it does fit in the character and nature of the neighborhood. Well, you're saying that without a floor plan, and you're saying that. And you're saying that without a, a, a front elev, without looking at the elevations of the, of what we're proposing. You're looking, you're making this decision without even looking at floor plans.
They're making the decision based on the variance requested, so 40 percent, I, I don't see how you could say 40 percent is not substantial.
We have the existing side yard of 29 point. Go ahead.
I think, but, I, I don't see how you're saying that 40 percent relaxation is not substantial. I understand you're saying you're only asking for one variance, sure. You're not asking for a great deal of them. 40 percent, though, is a substantial number. You're, you're asking for 15 instead of 25. There are places in Islip where you can get 15. There are zoning designations where 15 is conforming. It's not the case here, and I've looked at the area. I can cite maybe two things that have setbacks similar to that, but in both cases, one of them is over here in the canal, it's.
Why don't we do this? Instead of penalizing your client for you being unprepared, why don't you move, take an adjournment and sharpen your pencils and figure out a better way? You know, I think it's pretty clear what we want to do here. Why don't you find a way, help, help us help you?
Sharpen our pencil, but, you're not, I, I don't understand how you said we did, I didn't do my homework. I don't understand that. You guys don't have a floor plan in front of you. Brookhaven, Hebstead, Huntington, all the other towns on Long Island require floor plans and elevations. You guys haven't required that in years, and you're making decisions on something without looking at a floor plan. I mean, I am the one with the architectural degree.
Sir, sir, that's enough.
You know.
That's enough.
Can I ask a question?
Would you like to speak, sir? If you could give us your name and address?
My name is Vincent Papalardo, I live at One Post Lane.
Thank you, sir.
I'm the homeowner.
Yep.
I understand the position that you don't want a, a building or a, or house less than 25 feet from the neighbor's property, correct?
Correct.
That's not really what he said, but he said that the variance is very substantial.
He's asking for it to be 15 feet, and it's a 20-foot, the 20-foot span. The rest of the property is correctly stepped back, as you said.
Correct.
If our neighbor who lives next door, that, the building our house would be exposed to, if they agreed to allowing us to have it at 15 feet in that one section, would that be acceptable?
No.
Why not? Maybe it's moved.
So the board is bound by Section 267 B3B of New York State Town Law. There's five factors, and considering those five factors, the board must do something called balancing the equities. Percent relaxation is very significant. Nowhere in there does it say that if the adjacent property owner says okay, that it's okay.
Well, it's just, yeah, I mean.
Nature and character of the surrounding area is very important, so, so far you have a significant variance, and you don't have a nature and character argument.
Okay.
Whether the addition could be located somebody, somewhere else, if the applicant has alternatives, I would say with a 7,000 square foot house, it would be assumed that you have alternatives for additional living space.
Well, it's, it's not a 7,000, it's 4,900 square feet as it is.
I was quoting a.
Yeah, he's, he's incorrect.
Mr. Napoleon, but it's a, it's a.
It says, it says proposed 7900 square feet.
No, it does not, it's 4,800 feet.
Total building area proposed 7,899.28 square.
It's on your site plan, so.
Well, that's including everything on the property.
That's what, that's what this is total building area. Okay. You know what? Any other issues, because I think we understand. Any others?
Well, could I, we have a set of plans here, could I, can we, can I bring a set of plans up so you guys can look at?
You can submit them, but.
And not only that, we have, we have a.
You say you don't get them back.
What's that?
You don't get them back in the plan.
That's okay, well, that's all right, we have, we have.
If we can't build it, why don't you submit?
What's the big deal with getting them back?
All right, well, submit, submit them. Nothing's a big deal, and nobody's excited. Submit the plans.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in this matter?
Remember, this is, we're not coming here with five variances, four, when you look at the plan.
We understand what you're coming here for, sir. You can hand it to.
Four times, I think, in my 19 years, maybe four, four tops, maybe three, in 19 years.
I'm sorry?
I don't think this is.
Well, why isn't it rela, why isn't it relevant? A plan is not relevant? All right, look, all right, that, that area there is already depressed. We already have a shed in that area, in that area, anyway. The shed's close to the property, we're taking that shed, and we're moving it away from the property line, on the north side of the property line, we're moving that existing shed where it has to be. The bedrooms are already located in that space. The bedrooms are already located in that corner. So, since that, and, and that, that 22.6 feet towards the rear, and that 42.3 feet towards the front, are at, one is at 29.8 feet, the front, and the rear portion of that 22.6 feet of the rear of the house is even further away from the side yard. So the only area that's going to be close to the side yard is 28 feet of the middle, where we're putting, sliding these little bedrooms and bathrooms into that little notch, because that's where all the sleeping quarters are there now. So it's actually in a good spot, not to mention, not to mention.
I can see why architecturally it's a good, and it may be a good spot.
Okay, okay, that's good, I know, I understand, but let me, let me, let me continue. That architecturally, it's a great spot, it's a great plan. And the other thing is.
Well, we spent, we did have to run now.
The other thing we have is a very well-buffeted air, that whole, that whole property line, it's extremely vegetated and well-buff, buffeted area. This is not harming anyone, this is not an eyesore, it's not like we're building a second level on the house, we're not building this gigantic, it's only popping out of the left-hand side of this house a little bit. Now, if we have to do a covenant restriction, then never go any closer than that, or whatever you, if you want to give us a covenant restriction, we're only asking, this works out so well for them, this plan, if you look at the, even the elevation.
Well, for the record, we review every page of the plan each minute, and done, okay. Thank you very much.
So my, so my points here are this, my points. Number one, it's a, it's a very well-maintained house, it's a beautiful house, it's a beautiful piece of property, it's not overbuilt by any stretch of the imagination. Number two, where we're proposing to put this is an indented spot already on the side of the house. So it's like, we're grabbing a side that's already, we, we're utilizing something that's already, half of this is encapsulated in the footprint of the house to begin with. Number three, it's, it's in the sleeping quarters of the house where it should be, without having to go up above the house and start ripping the roof off and taking away from the, the architecture of the house, because it's a beautiful house. Number four, it's not going to affect anybody, because it's a very well-buffeted area, a, a property line to the north. It's, it's a, when we, when we initially sat down with this, because they were talking about going up and spending all this money, I'm like, there's really no reason for it. You have a really good spot right here, cut into the house already, we could put a couple of bedrooms right there. So it really is a really great spot architecturally, and in the, when it comes to the neighborhood, half of what we're adding is tucked into the house anyway, so it's, all you're going to see is a little hip roof and a little brick wall. It's like, it's very un-invasive to the property and to the neighbors and to everyone involved. So you're talking about a number, and I'm saying, well, this is really a good architectural layout, good plan for this. It's not like we're putting, we're not giving you something that requires six or five or four or three or two variances, we're talking about one variance. No, we're talking about one simple side yard variance for something that's going to be very useful to these people.
talked you out of it.
Correct. Good idea. I'll take a motion for an adjournment, please.
Motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Application's adjourned.
Thank you, you too. It looks nice, right?
It meets the code, didn't need a variance. And more.
It's not in AAA.
Different zoning.
One of the board members went to school here.
I did. In that chair right there.
Yeah, with Laura Engels.
That's what I thought about, with the Valtorian.
Thank you, bye-bye. Application number 734-25, Dwayne Santos and Alyssa Urcolino. Permission to use dwelling for two-family, family use only pursuant to Islip Town Code Section 68-419.1. Residence A District, west side of Somerset Avenue, 493.79 feet north of Montauk Highway, East Islip.
Good evening, Christopher Ang, 83 East Main Street, Patchogue, here representing the owners. We're.
We're all warmed up.
Yeah. Should I, should I leave and come back?
You don't want an adjournment, do you?
This one's an easy one.
Yeah.
I hope.
He thought the last one was easy.
We're looking to establish a, a two-family on this property. There are some extensions going on this property, but none, none of the extensions or the work that we're doing require any of the, any zoning relaxation, so we're just looking for a two-family.
Any questions from the board?
No questions.
Planning, any comments?
No comments.
Does anyone else who'd like to be heard in this matter? I'll take a motion, please.
It's me? Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion that we grant the application for a period of three years.
Second.
All in favor? Application's granted for a period of three years.
Application number 642-25, adjourned from October 28, 2025. Jane Dietz. Permission to elevate one-story dwelling, leaving side yard of eight feet instead of required 10 feet, and rear yard of 21.5 feet instead of required 25 feet. To erect deck, leaving front yard of 22.1 feet instead of required 25 feet. Side yards of six feet and 8.1 feet, and rear yard of 10 feet instead of required 15 feet each. To erect elevated shed, five by 10, leaving side yard of six feet instead of required 10 feet. To relocate and elevate shed, eight by 10, leaving rear yard of five feet instead of required 10 feet. To erect laundry shed, leaving rear yard of five feet instead of required 10 feet. And outdoor shower, leaving rear yard of five feet instead of required 15 feet. All having floor area ratio of 46.7% instead of permitted 30%. Residence BAA District, west side of Seabay Walk, 191.49 feet north of Maple Court, Kismet.
This one may not be as easy.
No, no, no. Can I just ask, right off the bat?
Yeah.
What is 6.7%?
Yeah. But, look, can I, can I add some stuff to this?
All right.
We're doing a house lift. The, the FAR of the, of the existing house is 28.6. So the, the existing house FAR meets code. Where we're driven over the code is the, the decking. Once we lift the house, the decking is, is included in that FAR.
Again, we've gone along with the, what I'm saying is, we've had gazillions of lifts, but they don't, almost double the FAR. It's not just driven by the lift.
Well, I, I, I think I can argue that.
You can, okay.
So, so the house itself is under the FAR, what's driving the, the high FAR is we're lifting the, the decks along with it. The existing decks bring us, if we just lift the existing decks, we're at 45.2%. So we are adding 90 square feet of decks, which is 1.5%. So I would say that the, the FAR is driven by the, the house lift. Yeah. 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 Correct. Yes, but I.
You have, you have.
So I, I brought three other cases that have, you know, similar FAR or over what we're asking for. In reviewing this with, with planning, you know, the, the comparison isn't a direct comparison, but I'd like to try to use those as precedents. I'll kind of let Nick take over some of this, this way we can kind of clarify the, the FAR.
Do you have a revision that is fair, hard, or is it, I mean, you can.
No, I understand, and.
So I have a larger, I don't know, I don't know if that's a claim.
But, but I, I'd like to point out, but on the CO, we're at 45.2% FAR, well, not FAR, but 45.2% if the, the decks were at the incorrect height, so.
What if I come to you and say 500?
So if we, if we just lifted the house with the.
Wait, 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 I'm sorry. You said on the scale, it's 45.2%.
No, I'm sorry, let me, let me clarify what I'm trying to say. So if we were to take the existing house and the existing decks, and we raised it to FEMA height, we would be at 45.2%.
I, I do need to really, I'm going to let you finish, but.
Okay.
To be clear, the decks don't need to be elevated to FEMA height.
Correct.
It's not a requirement, so I, just for the record, I, I think that's a little misleading.
Yeah.
Respectfully.
So, but, but Glenn Graham just presented almost the exact same argument on his Seaview house.
Not exactly the same argument, no.
Well, no, I didn't say, it's similar to what Glenn just.
It's almost the exact same, you said no.
Okay. I apologize for my wording.
Word, right.
It's similar, it, it is similar to what, what Glenn Graham just presented. So I bring, I bring it to you, I bring it to the board, and I'm trying to, I would like to see if I can get a relaxation on the percentage, the FAR. I did review this with Nick, and we feel that we came up with another, another property that's similar to ours, and I'll kind of let Nick kind of take over.
Okay, so, to, to try to go over, one of the main differences here between, in Glenn's case, it was actually a matter of the depth of it, not the height of it, so that, that is not exactly the same as yours to clarify, but not really relevant to this case. He's correct that if it was all elevated to the existing height, that it would be 45%. So that's completely correct. The issue, like I was trying to clarify there, is decks don't need to be elevated to FEMA standards height. And in doing so, he's going above six feet off grade, which now makes all of that count more like a second-story deck, it all gets calculated into the gross floor area. This has been the case in Fire Island for a very long time now. It's something that many architects, Mr. Graham included, often are savvy enough to try to avoid. Now, as I understand it, Mr. Ang wanted to raise all these up because his, his client, I believe, is elderly.
Yeah, she would like to come out on a level, you know, the same level as a house.
Which I understand to some degree, but I don't really believe it justifies the FAR being requested. As he alluded to there, there are some very high FAR grants in Kismet. Above what they're asking for here, I would point out that none of those are along Seabay Walk. So those are all in, map Kismet Park. These are 3,200 square foot lots. Seabay Walk is mostly 6,000 square foot lots. It's.
Are those applications, uh, living space, or is it, is it?
In at least one case, it actually is livable space.
Do you have a next question?
Sure.
What FAR is in the nature of category?
I would say that that number is 39.5. That is what has been granted on Seabay Walk.
Thirty-nine.
I understand.
Thirty-nine. Want to go back?
No, Mr. Wexler, I will, I will accept the 39.5%.
It's, it's a matter of just dropping some of the decks down.
We should, I'm like the last one, it started every meeting.
As far as the rest of the application is concerned, I think in some cases, actually, the decks are being brought further back from their existing location before they're being elevated, which is.
That's correct.
It's good of you because obviously they're more impactful when they're being elevated. The accessory structures as well. Important to note, all of these rear yard setbacks are to the federal land behind them, and I believe you do have a DEC permit?
That's correct.
Okay. So that would be the only concern that I would have is whether or not it's an issue for wetlands. Evidently, it is not. There's no neighbor behind them, so all the rear yard setbacks, I don't believe, are an issue. So really, other than the FAR, I don't really have any particular issue with this application.
Okay. Does anyone else like to be heard in this?
That's it. No. I was hoping for that extra 0.4%. Thank you. Have a great holiday.
It's okay. It happens. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
This is application 738-25, 86 MJ Boulevard. I believe we have a request for an adjournment.
Yes, for the applicant, Sir Timon Ballin, by Rebecca Sersman, 100 Motor Parkway, Suite 560, Hop Dog, New York. We request an open adjournment if possible.
Is anyone else that wants to be heard in that matter? No? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Great, thank you. Have a good holiday.
Okay.
And we also are just giving another chance to somebody who didn't show up earlier in the evening. Application number 720-25, Daniel Jose Bakay, or Bakwet?
Nobody here on that matter? Okay.
All right. Application number 735-25, Julio Perez and Senin Humberto Vera and Diana Matut. Permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to Isletown Code, Section 68-602, to leave three chicken coops having rear yard of 4.4 feet instead of required 10 feet, six-foot fence on property line not having required setback of 10 feet, and four-foot fence in driveway sight distance triangle exceeding permitted height of three feet. Residence A District, Southeast corner of Patton Street and Eisenhower Avenue, Brentwood.
Pictures of these fences?
Maria Hickey, Victory Expediting and Design, 606 Johnson Avenue, Suite 25, Bohemia, New York, 11716. Good evening, Board. So there are four items, sorry. There are four items here. So we have the apartment, the chicken coops, and there were two issues with the fence. I feel like I have addressed one of the items with the fence. I dropped off some pictures yesterday and the six-foot fence was cut down to four feet on the property line. So it would just be the other three issues at this point.
So you're no longer seeking that variance?
Right. I dropped off pictures, so you should be able to look at those, showing the height of the fence that was cut down.
I'm going to interject on that really quick. This is actually very recent street view, so actually it does look like it was dropped down to four feet. However, I think you still technically need the variance because of the perpendicular fence here comes to that side yard. So I think that's still a six-foot fence on the property line. It just happens to be the perpendicular one rather than the entire length of it, which it was before.
So the whole...
Which, to be clear, I think you need the variance. I just think now it's probably a grantable one.
Right, because that entire panel, which is eight feet wide, at its lowest point is four-foot, at its highest point it's six, so it's over four feet.
Correct. There is still a small section of the fence at six feet.
Yes.
The variance is still required.
Okay.
But you can kind of see it drops down and the whole rest of the length is at four feet.
Yes, okay, thank you.
So before you take it off of the request.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
But it's not a six-foot fence.
Most of it's not.
No, but I'm saying they would note it so we don't get it come back to us that it's a six-foot fence.
So we've got to still...
Yes, it's still part of the call of the meeting, but considering the small section with which it's actually being buried at this point, because they reduced the rest of it, I think it's very grantable.
Can our town attorney note that in the decision?
Sure.
Sure. Very excited.
Previous, current town attorney usually is so excited when she chooses.
That's...
I'll make sure she knows.
Right. That's Assistant Town Attorney.
I'm sorry, the Assistant Town Attorney.
What's going on? I don't know. We're losing track here. It's fine. Got you.
Besides that, it's the four-foot side obstruction. I don't really see a reason to really grant that. I don't usually see much of a reason. It is a solid wall. I don't normally recommend the board grant something that could be construed as a safety issue. And I have no real strong opinion on the chicken coops, but it's not a normal grant of the board.
Can they move the chicken coops?
They're pretty substantial. I'm sure he'd prefer not to, but if that's what the board's requesting, he won't really actually have a choice, I suppose. No, that'll do it. Thank you. We have...
Did you modify it or did you submit anything?
I think we have an application in for the driveway right now to extend it.
Yeah, was the photo you submitted show you didn't cover up the...
Oh, yeah, uh-huh.
I would imagine engineering wouldn't want to let that happen.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we have an application in right now and I think it was approved. Sure. So just to understand, the four-foot fence in the side triangle needs to be down to three?
Correct.
Okay, and what was the other thing?
The chicken coop's kind of removed.
Okay.
For compliance and the accessory apartment is for a period of three years.
Okay, and the fence, the otherwise...
It's granted.
The six-foot fence was granted.
Modified.
Correct.
So it's granted as is?
Yeah. The six-foot fence was granted as it currently exists.
Okay.
Noting that it's only the small section.
Okay, got you. Thank you so much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Number 736-25, Richard and Jaclyn Grando. Permission to erect two-story dwelling leaving floor area ratio of 31.5% instead of permitted 25%. To install pool patio leaving rear yard of 4.5 feet instead of required six feet. Bulkhead walkway on side property lines not having required setback of four feet each. And to maintain rear yard landscaping of 33% instead of required 40%. Residence A District, East Side of Davison Lane East, 1,350.22 feet south of Magoon Road, West Islip.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Rich Grando. I'm the property owner.
Hello, Mr. Grando.
How you doing?
I'm doing well.
Great. Yeah, we're looking to put a house together. I have four kids.
You're the applicant?
Yes, I'm the homeowner.
And the applicant.
And the applicant.
And the applicant.
Okay, Richard, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Planning, what do you have for us, please?
So most of this is completely fine. I'll just say, as far as the FAR goes, there was a grant not to exceed 31% as recently as last year at the house directly adjacent to this one. And really, all the same considerations were there. The board took into account nature and character and all of the other previous decisions they had made, and 31% was the number they chose. Again, this was only a year ago.
Did you hear that?
Yeah, I heard that.
Did we lose half a percent, Mr. Grando? Or sharpen your pencil or something?
We could try our best. I think we landed on this number because of the approval on the block, or I guess there's some houses that are comparable to that.
The one at 39, which is the neighbor directly to your number, I think? They got 31 when they were asking for, I think, 31.6.
Is that right? I didn't know that.
I think it would be kind of awkward for the board to then, one year later, for the direct neighbor to choose a different number.
I got you. .31?
Which lot? The neighbors or this one?
This one.
This one.
Uh... I can get that number for you. Well, actually, it's probably on the...
Appreciate it. It's .31.
So that would be like 12,000 square feet, right? Yeah, very good. 13, so you're talking about 60 square feet. And you can find the numbers, man.
Yeah. I got you.
All right. And on the rear yard landscaping, 33s?
That's within the normal bounds of what the board grants, especially around canals, certainly. I don't have any issue with any other aspect of the application. It's, the only one that might sound weird is the bulkhead walkway, but that's actually something we're looking to change and increase anyway, so...
Is anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? No? All right, I'll take a motion then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make an application. Having denied so much of the application, you'd seek 31.5% FAR, but grant 31% on the note and grant remaining of the application.
Second.
All in favor? Application's given 31%.
Okay, thanks very much. Have a good night. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
I'm just upset you went to Nick and not me on the rear yard landscaping.
I interrupted. I interrupted.
That was the chairman, so I...
Yeah, let's sort it down.
Application number 737-25, Marcos Home Improvement Corporation. Permission to subdivide lot into two parcels. Lot one to erect two-story dwelling on conforming lot and lot two to erect two-story dwelling on lot having width of 92.97 feet instead of required 100 feet. An area of 18,514.98 square feet instead of required 20,000 square feet. Residence AAA District, Northeast corner of Fourth Avenue and Third Avenue, Brentwood. But I understand that was incorrectly advertised as Third Avenue and it's supposed to be Third Street. Is that correct? Thank you. That should be Third Street, Brentwood.
Take a motion to amend the call.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We actually put this application in. We look at... I'm sorry, my name is Jose Martinez, 1528 St. Louis Avenue, Bay Shore, New York, 11706. I believe I have a survey.
The new updated surveys that we got from the...
Surveyor.
Submit this one or two. So... Yeah, same thing, so they can see it.
Subdivision plan? Updated subdivision plan?
Yeah, that's it.
Planning, you want to help lead us on?
I don't know anything about the new subdivision plan. I don't know if that's what I looked at.
When was this new plan submitted? Now, all right.
Is this, is this the plan that zoning looked at, or...
Yes.
Oh, so it's not a new plan?
No, no, no.
Okay.
I may have called this to you yesterday when I asked you if the plan not resubmitting to engineering, but I told you we didn't need it. I was wondering if you were resubmitting to engineering.
My mistake.
So to be clear, the plan that you're now trying to show is the one that was reviewed and the denial is based off of that?
Correct.
Okay.
Let's just get some dates out.
My name is Daniel Castro, 69 Orient Avenue, Brentwood.
Okay, so this plan...
The most recent date of the plan that you just handed up is dated October 15, 2025. Is that accurate? Yeah. And the one that we had in our file...
August 15, 2025.
Right, okay, so you've done one update since the time you filed. And I don't think it's relative to the variance at all, so...
Yeah, good.
Right, we're good?
Assuming there's not any additional variance requests, I really just intended to say that the request is de minimis. And that it's in the nature and character of the area.
Do we want to make sure there's the new plan, you've reviewed it, so we don't say yes?
I wouldn't be the one to normally review.
We went through the whole fact already. We went through the FAR. Pretty much, we are good with it. I think not even 25%. We have, one of the lots actually is conforming. It has 100 feet by 199 deep. The second lot have a 92.3...
That wasn't on the call.
I'm sorry.
The question is, the new plans, don't change any other variances you requested?
We're just approving what's here. Nothing that's changed.
What was the purpose of the revision?
Whatever is there, that's what we, yes.
What was the purpose of the revision? What did you revise?
They're responding to some of the engineering comments.
The frontage, we only request on the one lot, on the lot, the second lot to the east of the property is actually 92.7 by 99, so we are shy of the 100 feet frontage, which, you know, like in reality is less than 5% of the whole 20,000, less than 5% of the 20,000 requirement.
It's de minimis.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, corner radius.
Is anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter?
So if we could just make one thing clear, so engineering is fine with this?
Yes.
You, the town is requiring a corner radius dedication, a radius of 20 feet from you at the corner of Third Street and Fourth Avenue.
Correct.
Should that diminish the requested lot area? Oh, it won't, because that's the lot that complies.
Correct.
Correct. It's the interior lot that doesn't comply. Okay, so the corner radius dedication, which you showed on this update, has nothing to do with...
It was already taken care, it was already actually by the surveyor.
It has nothing to do with the ZBI application.
Correct.
Sir, would you like to say anything?
Hi, good evening. My name is Ellen Edelstein, 26, Fourth Avenue, Brentwood, New York, 11717. And if I may introduce David Cole, 29, Fourth Avenue, Brentwood, New York, 11717. I live directly across the street from the property in question. David lives on the corner property immediately to the east on Fourth Avenue. Okay, so we're neighbors. We'd like to object to the division of the property because it changes the entire character of the neighborhood. In addition, this is a historic property. I have from Gene Murphy's 1985 thingy here, way back, from the... I'm also the president of the Brentwood Historical Society. That's where my interest comes in historically. But from the Division of Historic Preservation, this property, the house that's on the property, was built in 1915. It is not on the historic register, but it nonetheless changes the culture of the neighborhood. This block, this section of Brentwood is part of the Old Modern Times community. There are five houses on the street and building two more houses that look to be quite large. I've taken photographs before the division was even approved. The property owners put up signs implying that there would be two houses on the street. There are two different for sale signs. There are all kinds of information, new constructions, plural. They presumed that this would be passed. There are concerns in the community about overpopulation of the school district. There are no empty seats in classrooms in the Brentwood School District. Houses built on the properties here will, of course, bring children into the neighborhood. There's no question about that. We're going through that with the approval of the apartments at the Sisters of St. Joseph and the Heartland Complex and such. But more importantly, it's the character of the neighborhood that I'm concerned about, that we're taking a wooded property and, I don't know if you want these pictures, but it's a beautiful piece of property. You're welcome to these. That's fine. That's fine. They're yours. They're reproducible, not a problem. I don't know if you want this. I also had this, Gene had sent me years ago, the historic, you know, survey of historic houses. I don't know if you want this. This is kind of an interesting document. You're welcome to that as well. I can reproduce it. Thank you. Sure. Understood. Understood. Is below. Yeah. Yeah.
That's looking to determine de minimis, what I should-
Yes.
That's de minimis. That's what they're seeking. I know it's, I wouldn't want to be the public, but the higher court, the Supreme Court, who the government, who didn't train us, because the law basically applies to what we do. And all they're looking is at eight foot now. We don't look at the population of school district. We need not follow the law on the ground, whether they're kids, whether they're soccer players, but that's not how the board would look at it.
May I also, I understand what you're saying. No, I do understand what you're saying. But I also am concerned because we do have the mosque on the other corner. I'm concerned about parking, street crowding. Third Street, the street that runs north-south, is very frequently parked on both sides with residents or, you know, observers at the mosque. An emergency vehicle cannot get through the street. It's dangerous. Same thing happens, we know what happens with two houses and parking and the danger to the streets. I guess you're looking at, yeah, if, the mosque is at the corner of Third Avenue and Third Street. So they have, they have some parking, and if you take a look at how wide Third Street is, you can see it's like very, very narrow. And the property at 23/4 abuts that, you know, part of the corner. It is impossible to drive down that street on a Friday afternoon, on a Friday night, on many of the holidays. And you put parking, more cars, what have you. We also have the issue with parking on Fourth Avenue, even though there are no parking school day signs, and, you know, nobody tickets on school days unless they're working on my roof, and then they get a ticket, even if they're working on my roof, which is, but that's a whole nother story, not your purview. It will change the character of the neighborhood, and I'd like you to consider that. I understand your rules. You know, the hundred by hundred is certainly within, but we do have people that were interested in buying the entire property and keeping it as a single home property. But they own it. Yes, I understand, they own it, but I'm just trying to mitigate.
Well, just looking at the area, that shouldn't say, there's lots that size around. And I don't agree with you, but, you know, and what they're asking for, from us, doesn't really make a lot of difference.
So let me ask a different question, if I may. It sounds to me like you're going to approve this application, or this request, or whatever, whatever the process, you know, the language. But then what happens in terms of the structures that are put? Where does that go? Who approves the structures that go onto the property? In terms of the size or-
The Building Department.
That would be the Building Department?
The currently proposed structures are conforming.
I'm sorry?
They're asking for any relief on the size.
Correct.
They're going to comply with the code. They have, if they can't comply with the code, they have.
So the 40-foot setback, the 18 feet from the property line, et cetera? I mean, I was looking, I was looking at all these paragraphs here, I printed down the paragraph.
If you comply with the code, you can, you can, you know, you don't need them. So, you know, if they build what they created.
I have not seen that. I've only seen the photograph that you're seeing, and I don't know that that's the house that they're planning to build.
But if they build it, and if it does build areas, then this is probably the last couple of, I don't know if it's just there, but they're still administrating. And if they build it, they'll, 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 and if they change from that, then they may be back.
Well, and if they build it against code? Are you going to ask them to take it down?
Especially if they look at a sale on that, it's hard to sell.
A CO won't be admitted, won't be issued.
If they build against the code, no.
Okay.
And it's going to be very difficult for them to come back to a now, they are sorry with that, that's what they're saying.
You like it. That's okay, that's okay. We, did you?
My name is David Cole. I live on 29, the opposite corner, and-
Do you need a house by this one?
Yes. And it's, my house is built in 108. It's a fixer-upper, we're working on it. It's a beautiful historical house across the way, which is, I think, older than mine. And diagonal there, in the process of renovating that house at 32/4th Ave. as well. I realize you can't, it's, it may be beyond repair, and you can't restore it, but to, to raise the property and put up two houses, in the end of the day, my, my, my house, my home, will be the only house on that block with a tree. So, given the character and nature of the neighborhood, you know, that's my sentiment. I would like there to be trees and-
Of course, and I, you know, the, the application, you know, obviously there's something between trees, green, and everything. A lot of, a lot of old trees give them money. And, you know, that's not really, you know, we have, we have a very limited scope here. And what they're asking for us, or from us, is very, very narrow, and, you know, it's how much room is taken.
I understand, and I appreciate you.
Can I call up, just so you understand? If they came in and said they have 92% loss of the lot, if they had seven, if they got that, if they had eight, there, if they have 92%, that's, the loss of that's basically de minimis. It's insignificant.
To speak to your concern, sir, it's, it's not the purview of the zoning board, whether or not they are or aren't keeping trees, but based on the plan, they're supposed to be able to, and they are currently representing which trees greater than 10-inch caliper are being removed and which ones are to remain. Usually, that's part of the conditions for the subdivision, is that whichever ones that are listed as being a significant more than 10 inches caliper, if it's not explicitly said that it is to be removed, it is assumed that it is supposed to remain.
Okay. I appreciate everyone hearing me out, and thank you for your time.
Based on looking at on this plan, having seen a lot of these, well, on all sizes table, I feel like you could probably, for having, you know-
Okay.
You know, I just-
No, I appreciate that, like, we haven't seen, so.
And I, and I wish I could give you mine, but I can't.
I get it.
They're, they're right there. They're going to be near. Daniel said he'll give us some. You going to give us some? You got four plans? You got another? I'll give you some plans, I have no problem with that.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody.
We're all friends.
You're welcome.
There's actually a tree survey. What can you add?
Oh, that'd be fantastic.
She's the boss.
May I?
Oh, thank you, boss. All right.
Absolutely, I have no problem with that.
Mary, if they would, if they would ask me about that, that the tree plan and everything else, you know, I, I can furnish that to them any second, anytime. She has my phone, she could have called me. Also, you know, I don't want to be responsible for, for the trees, for, for the neighborhood, because I know, I don't like to cut trees. I will leave as much trees as I can. My background as a Native American, we love trees. I'm a tree hugger, you can call me a tree hugger. But, you know, absolutely. Everything that I can, I will not tear down. Whatever I, yes. And also, when it concerns to the width of the, of the second lot, actually, Helen, Helen's house is, sits on a 90 Y by 199. So that's it. A precedent right, literally, a precedent right across the street. So, you know.
Yeah, they've done it.
I, I want to, I want to be able to improve in the neighborhood. If the town will let me keep the house, I wouldn't move it or do whatever, but, you know, it's not feasible, so, to me, that's, you know, money on the, money on the toilet if I, if I were to do that. Happy holidays, guys. Appreciate that so much. Absolutely, absolutely. She knows. She got my, she got my phone. No, no. No, no. No. I don't, I don't go that way. She met, she met my wife already. You think I want to be stupid?
And his daughter.
And my dog, yes. Exactly, she spoke to the boss directly, so, I don't want to.
All right, good luck.
Thank you, guys. Have a happy holidays.
We can keep this, right? We can keep this, all right.
Two-family, family use only permits to renew for a period of three years. Two-family, family use only permits to renew for a period of three years.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then, formerly reserved decisions are ready to be read into the record. So, in accordance with a proposed written decision dated December 9, 2025, application 569-25, Great River Enterprises. The application is denied that part of the application requesting to extend the site illumination hours, and granted the remainder of the application as amended by posthearing submission dated 10/28/25. On motion of-
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Application number 611-25, Good Samaritan Hospital Medical Center. In accordance with a proposed written decision dated December 9, 2025, the application is denied that part of the application requesting ground sign having area of 94.72 square feet. However, granted ground sign having area of 75 square feet, and granted the balance of the application. On motion of-
Motion, second. All in favor?
Mr. Nicola recusing.
Thank you for giving me this.
No reserves.
Oh, I had to.
No reserves.
You know what I have to do?
Reserves, good job.
Oh, thank you, everyone.